I'd like to call this meeting to order. I am Vice Chairman John Snady, sitting in this evening. Our Chairman Rodney Buckingham has stepped down from the Board, and I am temporarily in his place. So I do hope you will bear with me as we go forward. At this time, I'm going to ask you to rise. I'll have Lonny lead us into the Word of Prayer.
Lord, as we gather together tonight to conduct the first step of several steps to rezone and to conduct city business, Lord, I ask you just to watch over each and every person here. Lord, just to watch over our Planning and Zoning Board, the ones that's sick tonight and couldn't make it. Lord, watch over Rodney's wife, who is sick, and we asked you to watch over her. Lord, as we go through this meeting along with others to conduct this service, I asked you just to give everyone guidance, knowledge, and wisdom to do what's right for this community, this city, and this county. Lord, all these favors, we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
You would remain standing, Tom, with your leaders in the plate.
I will. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number four, the organizational matter. We are going to table that since there are just a couple of us here this evening. So make a note of that. At this time, Tom, I would like to ask, you have read the agenda? Would you adopt the agenda for me?
I will adopt the agenda.
Thank you. The agenda has been adopted. Tom, I would like to ask you to approve the minutes from the January 26th meeting.
I approve the minutes and approve the notes.
Thank you. Those minutes have been approved. In the way of new business, this is item number seven, Section 80 Public Hearing, a request to rezone parcel number JA13097 from R1 to R3 located between 74 and 154 Georgiana Street. At this time, turn it over to Brandon Douglas, City Manager.
Yes, sir. Vice Chair, and may I get some moment? If you could probably scroll over to... There we go. We'll start there. And just for everyone in attendance, this is the first of three scheduled public hearings as advertised. As the Vice Chair advised earlier, the second public hearing, the applicant has requested to table, meaning that although it was a scheduled public hearing, there'll be no staff report and there'll be no presentation by the applicant. This public hearing that we're about to discuss was advertised. The Planning and Zoning Board is an appointment position whereupon they make a recommendation to the mayor and council. There will be a scheduled public hearing on this matter Thursday, this Thursday at 6:00 PM in these chambers before the mayor and council. Subsequently, on April the 5th, there'll be another opportunity with mayor and council considering this matter for action. So for purposes of tonight, tonight is a scheduled public hearing whereupon staff will give a staff analysis of this zoning application. The presentation will be made by the applicant, and then the Planning and Zoning Board can hear from the public who's here to speak on this matter. So with regards to this matter, the applicant had submitted for a request to rezone to staff in accordance with our zoning ordinance. The city had recently redone the zoning ordinance. Organizationally, what that means is how we conduct business. So going back to the scheduled public hearings to afford the opportunity for both the applicant and the general public to be made aware of what's going on on particular parcels. So we have an obligation at the staff level to process applications when they come in. We have to abide by Section 94-246 to go through nine criteria in regards to the proposed change in land use. Currently, as it stands, it is a zoned piece of property of R1. The applicant is requesting to do an R3 multifamily rezoning, detailing the site plan of about 96 units, which the applicant will give a presentation on momentarily. What I want to do is just talk to the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as to the general public and to the applicant that in accordance with our comprehensive plan, this particular property is considered in the traditional neighborhood character area as it borders the East Jasper Gateway corridor. What that essentially means is there's some commercial properties in between the road, this parcel, and then some traditional single-family as well as multifamily dwelling units. In accordance with the land use, the future land use map does say that this particular land use category is a goal to mix residential uses with densities, promote and preserve neighborhoods, existing architectural style, increase pedestrian connectivity, accommodate infill that complements the existing area, preserve existing mature trees during development and open space in greenway. With regards to whether or not this particular use is generally suitable for the site, in light of the surrounding land use, meaning other properties that butt this nine-plus acres, there is general commercial, R1, R3, C2, R1, C2, and R1. So with regards to adversely affecting any economic values of the uses, staff did look and consider that because there is a mix of land uses with respect to the C2, the R1, low density, and there is some R3, higher density in the area as well, there should not be an adverse effect economically. This particular land use, as it pertains to R1, it should not be diminished by that particular category. What that means is the applicant can use the property as R1 in its current condition. The request of R3 is to increase the density for a multifamily component. There is the criteria that we use to look at existing streets, sewer, water resources, police, and fire protection, and other utilities. What our analysis did reveal that you are examining a vacant parcel. So in and of itself, by virtue of it being vacant, there will be an increase in all of those services because there's currently not anything there. We did disclose that we are in the position of increasing our capacity at the wastewater plant. Currently, we are probably a year or two away. So at this moment, we have to take into consideration that if this is approved for development, we have to be mindful that as we go through the process of approving or considering approval of different residential uses, how does our capacity at the wastewater plant? Currently, we feel as though that because of our expansion efforts, if this were to happen, then we should be okay. With regards to police and fire services, we do acknowledge that this would be a greater demand for those. So that is disclosed, that there will be a greater number of calls for service. Even though it's a vacant parcel, going from an R1 to an R3 does increase that propensity for a greater calls for service. The criteria as to whether or not the vacant parcel has been marketed, staff is not aware of any marketing efforts. So we do not know that if it's in current R1, if it's being marketed or not. So we cannot speak to whether or not it's been sitting for a very long time, being marketed as R1, and it's not something that could or could not be sold in its current designation. As it relates to the change requested out of scale with the needs of the city, the proposed change does not appear to be out of scale with respect to the need to increase housing options for the city. However, some adjoining properties are single-family, which would be considered out of scale with higher density. However, the presence of an existing multifamily development does indicate that there is some scale that is consistent with this proposed project. With regards to the permitted properties already zoned, based upon the existing zoning map, staff is unaware of adequate number of sites in the general vicinity that could be considered for this particular type of project. And staff is unaware of any additional conditions that would inhibit the use of this property for the intended use. So the nine criteria that we followed through the zoning ordinance based upon the analysis of the application using those standards and criteria found in Section 94-246, staff does recommend approval with the conditions as outlined that the applicant, if this is favorably considered by the mayor and council, that they adhere to Article 1, 2, 5, 6, and 7 of the zoning ordinance with respect to... That's the zoning ordinance with respect to the City Code ordinances, Chapter 18, 26, and 70. What those provisions are is with regards to making sure that if this development is favorably considered and approved, the applicant and developer would need to adhere to all the standards with regards to setbacks, densities, and building regulations. So with that, Mr. Vice Chair, I think Lonny can kind of talk about in terms of advertising and other things.
Okay. The applicant for this project did pick up the signs, and they have been placed on the project, I mean, on the area there. It has been advertised in the progress. We have spoke with some individuals in the area, and as far as I know, there's no reason that it hasn't been made public in any way.
Thank you, Lonny. At this time, I'd like to ask the applicant, if they would like to make their presentation, I do ask you to keep it within a 10-minute period, please.
Good evening. My name is Philip Seals. I'm the President of the Memory-Based Seals Foundation. We are the applicants for the site. We are multifamily developers here in the state of Georgia. We currently own around 1,500 units of housing throughout the state. We have been in business now for... Between when we first started in multifamily with assisted living, that was the early '90s, so almost 40 years of experience of doing multifamily housing here in Georgia. We're not an out-of-state group. We are a 501(c)(3). We're a religious-based nonprofit. We believe in... You know, the mission we're doing is something that is... We are truly and full-heartedly for. We were here last year asking for the city for a rezoning site over off Old Philadelphia Road. We're faithfully staying there as well. However, that deal unfortunately fell through. This year, we've been reassessing the location of our site. We have thought... We love Jasper, always have, think it's a great community to be in. We believe that the site we have identified is in conformity with our intended use there. As Brandon said earlier, we do have adjacent land uses that both are R3 and commercial. We understand that there is some R1 around, and that will cause some controversy within the community. And we do want to work with the community in a way that can be amenable, if possible. We understand that there will be some just hard nosing. We get that. I do want to point out that in the comp plan that the city put together, the 2008 to 2028 comp plan, it does call out for a variety of housing mix as it relates to the housing population within, not just Pickens County, but also in the city of Jasper, that there are... That at the time of this written, which was obviously 12 years ago, that only 6% of the housing stock in Pickens County was multifamily. Want to point out that it also states that much of the housing proposed in these communities may not be affordable to the average Pickens County resident and will instead draw new citizens to the county as another reason to provide more quality housing within the community for the residents of the community. We also have in here that we have... And under the section Increase Share of Multifamily Housing in Pickens County and City of Jasper, the final sentence says, "As the county and cities grow, there will be a continued need for multifamily housing to accommodate workers that wish to work and live locally." And finally, under Infill Development, which is most particular for this site because we do see this as very much of infill development, that says, "This type of development pattern can provide a wide variety of housing types with connected pedestrian-friendly street systems to schools, parks, and neighborhood commercial areas." Now, our intention, like we said, was to build 96 units, and it would be located predominantly on the... If I got my directions right, the eastern side of the parcel. We would have... Which is also going to be abutting the R3, the other R3 property. We've been in talks with the city about a future use of a park in the area that the landowner, that we would be... After we end up purchasing the land for the landowner, would be donating to the city to help build that park. You know, we definitely think it's a great amenity, not only for the overall community, but obviously for the residents of our community as well. So we think that... I know while there will be obviously opposition against the idea, we do see this as being a win for the community as well because we are not providing... We're also providing not only just a housing variety that's consistent with local... With the adjacent uses, as well as also we're donating land to the city to help build a park, which otherwise the city would take that burden on themselves. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Do I hear any words from citizens? And if so, I do ask that the citizens limit their statements to approximately three minutes apiece.
I certainly got something to say.
Would you state your name, please?
My name is John Sealsby. I grew up in that neighborhood. I live right here in town. I'm sure a lot of you know me. Hey, everybody. I think I have a unique perspective on this particular proposal. I spent the last six years living in Los Angeles. I grew up here, lived here for 35 years, moved back last year. This is a slippery slope. Destroying these neighborhoods that are historic here in Jasper, by allowing something like this to come in here and do what they're trying to do is a terrible idea. I disagree with several points of the initial assessment of the risks involved. And the idea of just donating some land to the city for the city to take responsibility for it, to build a park... If you guys can let this happen, they need to build that park with their money. Because putting the burden back on the city to go in there and develop that land, that's not a good trade-off for us. So I have to absolutely say I stand against this. It's a bad idea. It's bad for the people in that neighborhood. It's bad for the historic significance of Jasper. And it leads down a very slippery slope to where we're all going to be living in a much different environment than we know and love at this point. So I would urge you all to consider rejecting this proposal for the good of all the citizens here in Jasper. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sealsby. Do I hear anyone else?
My name is Joe Jones. I've lived on South Main the most of my life. And I have mixed feelings about what's going on here. I'd like to know the density difference between the R1 and R3 per acre.
I'm going to have to ask. I'm going to have to defer to Brandon on that.
The other issue that I have...
South Main's turned into a drag strip, and I've called numerous times to get something done about that. And to this point, it's not happened. It's from stop sign to stop sign, all these new mother and everything. The people just seem to take quite pride in... A lot of pride in trying to see how loud they can be going up and down there. And is this to involve Epi Street or just Georgiana?
The audience is too involved.
Okay. At this particular time, the project, they had looked at two entrances, one off of Georgiana and one off of East Sellers. But since that has been shown on the plan, it looks like that one of those on East Sellers will not be able to be used due to a transition of land back in the early '70s or mid-'70s. So as of right now, Epi Street or Cock Street is not on the plan at all as far as an entrance or exit. There's things that will have to be looked at and changed.
Can it be built without that?
Excuse me?
Can it be built with just one entrance?
Well, I'm not to that point yet. I mean, we've been looking at the plans and everything, and we've been following through with the procedure. Tonight, we were concentrating on the rezoning of the property. That's what this hearing was about. But in the future, I mean, we would have to see the plans and follow through.
I think that's getting the horse before the cart.
And let me just... In accordance with compliance with the zoning ordinance, there is a requirement that in between 41 housing units to 150, there's required two means of ingress egress. So...
Well, I'll suggest we get that answer to that before we move forward. Because that's going to have a big effect on the communities.
Anything else, Mr. Jones? I hope we're waiting a little bit longer. Give Brandon a shift of time here.
I think... Has anyone ever surveyed all that down there? Because when I saw the house to y'all, I had to have a survey on that back lot. And the surveyor came back and told me that property line was in the middle of Epi Street. So I know there's eminent domain that comes into play there. But if that's not wild enough, I think that we just need to know what these answers are to these questions before you say that we want to rezon this.
I appreciate that. Would anybody else like to speak?
And just, Mr. Vice Chair, in accordance with the 9.43 acres in terms of the existing land use of R1, it would yield 410,770 square feet divided by the required R1 is 20,000 square feet. It would yield 20 units versus the R3 request. It would yield 117 units. By way of answering your question.
Okay. I think that's something the community and the Board needs to take into consideration.
Did you want to speak?
I would like to.
Could I have your name, please?
My name is Nicole Dixon. I'm on Tech Park Street, directly across the street from where the proposed park is. So I'd be watching the park off my porch. I would like to consider a traffic study. The current nine acres is surrounded by 17 lots, families, businesses. That's 17, let's just say, you know, 34 vehicles, maybe a couple more. You're adding, you know, 96 units, you know, for one-to-two-car families. How will our infrastructure that was built in 1950 with stop signs and, you know, four-way stops handle this? Will we be putting traffic lights to, you know, at Georgiana and the Old Road? Or will we be putting traffic lights in town at East Sellers and Main Street? How do you guys propose to handle the kind of traffic influx that 96 units would bring in?
Brandon wants to hear. I have to go ahead with you.
Yep. And once again, just to... I do not want anyone in this room to think that we're going to subvert anything. What we have to do at the staff level is conduct the public hearing in accordance with our policies and procedures. Those questions that are asked by the public in regards to the Planning Commission that can then be articulated to the council with respect to concerns of traffic, that is something that if the council wanted to impose on the applicant with respect to requesting a traffic study, the Planning and Zoning Commission is kind of the introductory board that hears the public hearing to have these questions that then the applicant, between now and Thursday night, and then between now and April 5th, when there's a potential up or down or table in both, can then work with the applicant to say, "How do you intend to address these concerns as expressed?" So what we will do is, at the staff level, this staff report that was given tonight, there'll be a synopsis provided to council Thursday evening whereupon what we do is we say that these were the concerns expressed by the actual citizens. You can still attend that public hearing and express some, but council can review those and ask the applicant how they intend to address these concerns. So staff does not have control over mandating anything beyond that of what we have to review with those nine sections.
I've got one more comment. I'm just asking that you have the whole program, the whole plan in place before the decision's made. If you're going to require them to have two exits, let's see where that's going to be and how that's going to be handled. That's all I've got to say.
And I appreciate that.
I would like to... I'd like you guys to take notice of the current road.
Could I have your name, please?
Nicole Dixon.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Somebody else raised their hand. I'm sorry. Hold on just a moment, Nicole.
Sure. I wasn't finished, but that's okay.
Okay.
My name is Linda Riley. I'm on East Sellers. I have a question for the developers. I look at your website, and you've done a number of different kinds of mixed use. What do you have in mind for us? Some have been for people with disabilities. Some have been predominantly seniors, mixed families.
Yes, ma'am.
What's your intention, for example?
Our intention here would be to do a general occupancy of family development on those properties. Then would be... This would be a three-story walk-up type facility. Architectural standards we would be looking to do would be using party plant siding, stack stone, brick facades. We would have a playground on site, a office building that would be housing not only a computer lab, but we would also be trying to sponsor into an after-school program for some of the children in our community. We would be... I'm trying to think here. It is... We do both seniors and family. Not specifically... Much more geared towards seniors. From an analysis that we've done with our market analyst, the need for family in Jasper has, shouldn't be a greater need right now. And that's what we've seen that this would be... From what we're showing what the housing needs are, that this would be the more favorable alternative for the community. I know, not for y'all, I get that. But from a market standpoint, more people will move into this development as a family development.
So you talk to our traffic, and all would be greater because a mixed use family would possibly bother a husband, a wife, and a teenage child.
Yes, ma'am. And we would actually full-heartedly support city efforts to put a light at Georgiana and 53, if that's what was needed. Because, you know, when we've been at the site, we've driven out, we understand that taking a left back onto 53 can be a bit hazardous at times. You know, one of the things that if I may kind of speak a little more to the public... I understand that there's a lot of fear and concern about coming into the development. And I know that y'all, you know, you don't have to believe me and I guess that. But I do want to just say that the people who are living in this community, the people who would live in the community we develop are going to have the same concerns, the same fears, the same desires that y'all have too. They want to live in a good, quiet place. They want to be close to downtown Jasper. They want to enjoy the schools. They want to enjoy the parks.
Will you be screening them for those things? How will you know who's going to live there?
I mean, that... People have choices on where...
I mean, that, people have choices on where they want to live, so it's kind of difficult to say that we would have to pick and choose.
Does this have any subsidized rental in it?
No, sir, it doesn't. If it, it does not have any subsidized rental housing in the current structure we've got for now at all. So what we use is, and I was here last year and I presented to the city, the program we use is a tax credit program. Now, one of the things, and I understand this can generally scare folks, but the way the program works is when you buy your house, you put down ten or twenty percent for your equity into the home. We're awarded the tax credits by the state of Georgia. We then sell those credits to a banker and insurance company. That money becomes equity in our deal. That's what it is. So we're putting down, instead of putting down ten or twenty percent, we're putting down maybe sixty-plus percent down.
Are they rentals or lease condos?
They're rentals, sir. Rentals.
So you can get the tax credit where the rental?
You can get the tax credits where the rentals. Now, in return for getting these tax credits, we're charging a lower rent. Our rents are gonna be, a one-bedroom's gonna be around seven-hundred dollars a month. That's what people are paying for their way to get it. Now...
Seven hundred dollars a month?
Seven hundred dollars a month, yes, sir.
My name's Paul Stockstein. We moved here a year ago on Georgia Avenue to get away from, Georgiana Street, to get away from...
The same development.
The same thing that happened where we used to live. Right now, traffic is so bad up there, you got the law, there's constantly in them other It's just gonna go on more and our property is gonna just go down-down.
I, I, again, I understand the fear, the...
With all due respect, buddy, I don't think it's...
Just a moment, just a moment.
On order.
Please do not interrupt. Thank you. Go ahead. I understand the concern, I understand the city's position and what they're saying, and I know that a lot of people don't agree with that. There are, I know that if I say that there are studies from the University of Georgia that support the city's position, that y'all would have a hard time, you know, believing that as well. I get that. I don't think I'm gonna convince anybody that housing values won't be impacted with a new development.
So you plan on building walk-throughs in?
Excuse me, sir?
Let him finish, please.
So like I said, our rent structure is around seven-hundred dollars a month. That's for the one-bedrooms. We would be going up to maybe fourteen, fifteen-hundred dollars a month for the rents. It's a similar way of saying that, as an individual, how often have you looked at what the government pays for and said, "I don't wanna put my tax dollars towards that"? It's the exact same way for a banker and insurance company that said, "I'm putting my tax dollars here", because that's exactly what they're doing. So I understand that there's a lot of concern, a lot of fear about the development. I do wanna emphasize that our residents truly do want to be good neighbors. I know I can't screen them in their coming in, but these folks that are living here are gonna be, eighty-plus percent of them are gonna be front pickets here. The rest are most likely gonna be family members of people who live here in Jasper. That's, that's what history has told. We have fifteen-hundred units in the state. This is how, this is how these communities, this is how the communities, that's how they fleece up. People aren't moving from Macon, Georgia, up here to Jasper. Yes, sir.
Do you have any other projects like this in the state of Georgia?
Yes, sir, I do. I have eleven other developments in the state of Georgia.
Just exactly like the one you're proposing here?
For family, because I have...
With the same, with the same structured tax credit?
Yes, sir. Yes, yes, sir, all of them, yes, sir.
Is there any way that the city council can get a report on what the status of that is?
Actually, when I was here for our pre-con meeting, I did invite the city council to visit any of our communities. They walked through our closest one, I believe, from where we're standing would be either in Gainesville, Georgia, or Maltzville.
Can they get a list if they can contact the city police and fire department?
Yes, sir, they can.
Services there?
Yes, sir, they can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Stock, do you have something else you want to say?
My comment was just, I don't think that we're fearful of this development as much as, this just is not what people who live here want, plain and simple. I mean, we all know what's gonna happen. It's like, these folks said that they moved here to get away from that.
Yep.
And you can spin it any way you want to, but, you know, we all know what the real deal is here. To frame it as us being fearful because we don't know what's gonna, we all know what's gonna happen. I mean, we've seen this before and, you know, progress is inevitable, but we can do it in a much more responsible manner. That was my comment. Thank you.
My name is Kathy Augustini, and just like you said, the same thing happened to us. We lived in Cherokee County. I've lived there all my life. And they were building a development just down the street from us, which was gonna back up to our property. And you wouldn't believe it, the traffic and everything. And that's why we sold and then moved here. And now it's gonna be, probably be that way also.
Mr. Dixon?
I would like to also just make a note, like a point, that how the schools would respond to this and how the school buses. Currently, you know, we have been districting that area to Tate Elementary. It's quite a hall and, you know, ninety units would mean, you know, fifty-plus children going to Tate, Pickens, the middle school, and the junior high. So we'd have school buses for all four of those coming around the neighborhood, which already come, but we'd be having a much higher capacity as far as that's concerned. Also, we probably need at least three new teachers for a development this size within the school system. So I'd like to just make that a point for the board.
I appreciate your point. Thank you. Yes?
My name's Kelly Monworth. I live on East Sellers Street and that was the property that, you know, we're doing that with, yeah, sorry, that's mine. But beyond this development, before we move from R1 to R3, I'd really like to know how that's gonna impact the ecology back there? How is the water gonna drain off? There's a creek back there, there's also an old dumping site back there, there's old trees, like, there's a lot of stuff to consider that's been back there for a while. And I'd really like to understand the impact there before we consider a larger, a more residential area. I am a hundred percent for bringing in affordable housing here. I think we really need it, and I believe we can do it in a way that would be amenable to, not just few people. But I would be curious to see the environmental, if there's an environmental impact study, I'd be really interested in seeing that.
Thank you. Ms. Mayor?
Me?
Yep.
I'm Katie Rehman. I live on Foot 124, Georgia Avenue Street. What do you plan to do with that branch that comes down through there when it rains a real lot? I ain't seen that up to my back door almost.
Again, we would, so we would, our civil engineer would do an analysis on it. We had to pipe that line, we would pipe the lines of the stormwater pretty much.
How are you gonna take care of that branch, that water coming down through there?
Again, I, we haven't, we're not into that position on the land yet, but my, I mean, they've done this all over, all over the country, the civil engineer would go with a fine solution. And it would be a way that does not impact any of our neighboring land uses, we're not gonna have any runoff going through our adjacent land uses.
One more concern. I'm curious to see about the park, the proposed park, that I would have the privilege of watching over every day. What kind of park? Is it going to be a green space? Are there going to be people, put traffic in and out, available to, you know, the community members? Will there be parking on-site at the, at the park? Or will it be, you know, pedestrian access only?
I mean, I...
True question.
Yeah, that's the question. I've only been told by the city, I would vote for pedestrian access only. No, I don't know, we've only been told by the city that the city does have a vision of including a park in the area. So we've said that, you know, the land that we're not using, we'd be very happy to donate towards that. But again, if that's, if it was pedestrian only, you would definitely get our support.
What about those black bears that are down over it?
The thing of what I'm hearing tonight is, we have a multipurpose plan here, it's not in place, and we're asking for zoning to start one part of it until we know the whole story on, is everybody going along with everything? I've heard an amphitheater mentioned, I've heard a park, I've heard apartments. You know, I don't really understand the whole program or the whole plan, you know, like some of the issues, the environment, the waters, where is, the answer is all that? It just seems to me like you need to have an answer on those before you have an answer on zoning.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, if I could, and just, just to reiterate, the points that staff has to make with respect to that, we have a criteria that we have to follow in accordance with the zoning ordinance with respect to any sort of business model or plan for the development, with respect to donation of green space. The city's proposed park area at the corner of, kind of Church Street and Main, that three acres or so, the reason the developer applicant has suggested that the corner piece could be included in a future phase of a path of green space, that is not being considered with regards to the staff analysis. What we have to consider with respect to an application where a property owner has an existing land use, a zoning designation, we have to process that request as a change in zoning land use, with respect to any future details associated with included in a park. That is something that if the applicant wanted to donate property to the city, that has nothing to do with respect to any analysis. I can tell you that there have been monies allocated by the city council for a squashed project at the corner of the three or four acres. There is no monies identified in this year's budget that would entail any sort of, anything beyond a passive green space. So I do not want there to be any misunderstanding that the applicants requested to change the land use from R1 to R3, we have nine criteria that we have to follow with the zoning ordinance as provided in staff report. With respect to your questions asked tonight, those questions will be documented and articulated in staff's report Thursday evening. Council will have a same public hearing to where the public hearing is a chance for the public to be heard. The decision would then be deferred to an April fifth, regular council meeting or any other action. But I just wanna make sure, this body this evening and the public hearing on Thursday is not a deciding vote. It is a recommendation with respect to how it is favorably or not favorably received. There is no binding to any decision made by this particular body. So just, just for everyone to be aware. Mr. Chair, it's all right.
It's quite all right. Thank you. Do I have any other voices to be heard from the floor? Yes, sir. Your, your name, please.
My name is W.R. Boon. This might be the developer's house, looking at that side plan a little bit, but I know we're not discussing that here tonight, but I'm so old, I go back to the days we put down concrete through Atlanta from Peachtree Avenue, Green Hill. They wanted to go put two lanes each way. I questioned it in nineteen-sixty-one, and traffic is gonna be a nightmare, that's gonna double the traffic in that area of all the homes sitting there now. And, and I was wondering, and also something needs to be thought about the city later on, and need to build some sidewalks so people can access the city from that area. Kind of dangerous down there right now. But that side distance off Georgia Avenue Street, you really get to go try to turn left in there later, you have to double that route, over that crest of that hill, it'll be somebody hurt if you don't put a traffic signal down there. But anyway, and I think we're probably gonna have to have a retention upon a cricket site up there on that plane. I think the city's had some traffic problems down below there with all that runoff already, if I remember correctly, last time I was with these meetings. But, but the ingress and egress is a big problem up there right now. You know that.
Yes, sir.
But let's blame the terrorists going on in houses. And even then, even then, you're gonna have a problem, yes, sir. But anyway, that was something I'd like to say, that it is gonna be a problem, but my hat's off to anybody that wants to, I'd like to build it now. And one other thing, seven-hundred dollars a month is cheap nowadays, I know, with all these people around here on minimum wage, seven, eight dollars an hour after taxes, ain't gonna cut it. It's sad, but I wish somebody would donate a bunch of property, that's really felt something that I'd like to do.
All right, Boon, anybody else? In the back, did you have your hand up?
Not for us.
Okay. Ms. Dixon?
I just, I guess a question or a concern would be, why couldn't we develop single-family homes rather than ninety-six units? To bring in ninety-six new families versus what was the density before, twenty, twenty-some odd families? I think it would make a huge difference in the community, you know, I think it would give people opportunities for housing and increase, you know, homeownership in their life versus ninety-six units of rental properties. I think the community might even, some people might even feel differently if we could bring down the numbers significantly and have R1 homes built back there.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
Hey, my name's Michelle Law and I live at Seventy-four, Georgia Avenue Street. I have my two boys here, and I just worry about our safety with that many people being right in my backyard. And the street that they are now talking about, where they would have to enter the city division or the apartments, that is right beside me. And that hill there is terrible, it's a blind rod. I don't know, I just worry about the safety of my family right there. And if some of the departments came and it went through, I would really love if I could get a fence built to protect my family from whatever is right in my backyard.
And we have a lot of traffic and they drive fast, in this draft.
And there would be more.
Lots of them, they drive fast.
Any other comments? All right, you can see that we do not have a quorum, we are not a voting body per se. We do not make binding, binding votes up here. It's Tom and myself right now. Were you able to get, was Joanna able to zoom in? She was not, okay. It's just the two of us here. We will talk and we'll decide whether in the affirmative, whether in the not affirmative, or if we're just going to make certain that what has taken place has taken place, that we have a public hearing where concerns, statements could be voiced. So let me talk with Tom, the two of us are gonna at least discuss this to some extent and see if we can come to some conclusion. At this time, we have decided not to be in the affirmative on this. Now, once again, we are not a binding vote. What is done has been done, and we have made that statement, the two of us up here. So I wanna thank each and every one of y'all for being here this evening. I wanna thank you for your comments. I wanna thank you especially for the neighborly attitude, attitude that each and every one of you showed here this evening. So if you wanna stick around, you can, we have one other piece of business, and it is basically a, an amendment to the zoning ordinances. I will ask Brandon to bring it up.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Just, just as a reminder procedurally, for both the applicant and the public, this matter will be a public hearing before the mayor and council on this Thursday at six p.m. at his chambers, with further consideration at the April fifth, six o'clock, regular council meeting. So just wanna make sure all parties are aware of that.
So just want to make sure all parties are aware of that.
My doctor, Keith.
Gentlemen, I appreciate y'all having this and giving us an opportunity to speak.
Thank you for speaking.
And I understand y'all's position.
We understand your...
Yes, sir. Thank you. Been around this all my life.
Yes, sir. Been there thirteen years, ain't my first.
Couple of years y'all come back up, how's that?
Yeah. Done it so many times.
Been on many projects, and I'll just, just need a little more, you know?
Yeah.
We're now going to address section seven of the new business item C in this public hearing. Pardon me, pardon me, please.
Okay.
All right. Good luck. Pardon me. We are now going to address item C of section seven, this is a public hearing, text amendments to the zoning ordinance and sign ordinance of the city of Jasper.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, and just from a procedural matter, even though the chairman said, the vice chair said at the beginning, procedurally, I do want to make sure that if there was anyone here for item B, the public hearing requested to resume tracks of parcel 041015 at 1317 West Church Street, the applicant has requested to table. If there's anyone here for that public hearing, staff will not make any comments, the applicant will not make any remarks, but if there is anyone in attendance, because it was an advertised public hearing, they do have that right to be heard. And seeing on, Mr. Vice Chair, in accordance with your direction, we will move forward with the item C, public hearing, text amendments to the zoning ordinance and sign ordinance of the city of Jasper. As your packet will reveal, there has been a staff-driven effort to examine section 94-96, subsection B, subsection 1 of the Jasper zoning ordinance with respect to design standards. Through the development of this ordinance, there had not been any, I guess, thought that an exception needed to be made with regards to the operations and functionality of aviation with respect to being in the city limits. Therefore, the text amendment is being requested to be favorably considered to exempt the properties affiliated with the airport, aviation, with respect to the design elements of 94-96, subsection B, subsection 1. This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone here to speak on that matter, they can do so as a public hearing.
Anybody can speak regarding this?
And if there's any questions or comments from the commission, we can help address those, or we can just talk about the next item with respect to this public hearing.
Tom, do you have any questions?
And furthermore, the signed ordinance as section 95-26, subsection D, with respect to the elimination of the flag as being non-permissible, that was another staff-driven effort to suggest amending. So with respect to the advertised public hearing, staff is recommending to strike that particular subsection D from 95-26, and it is part of the public hearing as well, if there's anyone who would like to make comment thereof.
I open it to the floor. Do I have any comments?
I mean, I'll just say, it's, we have to light up, either you light up the flag or you take it down tonight, y'all's call. And with that, that's the end of staff's presentation on those public hearings.
Make your statement.
If y'all want to make any sort of recommendation, that albeit not a form or binding to mayor and council with respect to those items.
Tom, do you have any others?
I'm okay with those, yes.
As am I. Anything else to be brought before the zoning planning and zoning committee? If not, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion.
So be it. We order adjourned. Thank y'all for being here.